Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, September 25th, 6:30 PM. We have four members present at this time. Councilor Gray, you understand this conference. At this time, everybody should rise and pledge allegiance. And Lonnie, why don't you go down?
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Please join me in the pledge. I declare the pages to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lonnie. Chief White, already making his way up. Chief, you can do the introduction for us.
Sorry.
Look at that. Even better. We were only kidding. We weren't quite ready. We were almost there. There we go. Good evening. If you'd like to join me in prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, we thank you so much for the blessings that you bestowed on our nation, or the mindful of the dangers that are ever present out there. We just pray, Lord, that you put a hedge of protection around this country of ours and protect our military, protect all of our government leaders, our elected officials, in particular, our hometown of Oviedo, city employees, that you would guide them and give them the tools and the trade that they need to fulfill their mission each day, every day, for the citizens of Oviedo. And thank you for the blessings you bestowed on us for this town. I pray that you just watch over us and protect us. Lift this up in your name. Amen. Thank you, Chief. Sir, only I am here in the middle of the seat meeting. So we are going to round for our pledge of allegiance. This is Resolution Number 3049-25 and 3050-55. And it is to adopt the military and candidate budget. This is copy of each section.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for council to conduct the second two required public hearings to adopt the proposed military rate and the proposed budget for fiscal year 2015-16. The total 2015-16 budget is $60,112,525 net of inter fund transfers. The military rate is 5.0434 mils. The general obligation bond military rate of 0.2386 mils, for a total of 5.2820 mils. It is recommended that City Council read each of the resolutions by title and stating the proposed military rate and the general obligation military rate, and the combined military rate. Conduct the public hearing and then adopt Resolution Numbers 3049-15 and 3050-55. And now, one last thing. I know I sound like a rubber record at times, but I just can't. I've got to express my sincere gratitude to our budget team. They did the heavy lifting this year, and they've done a wonderful job putting together this budget. So I'm going to express my gratitude to them as well.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. So at this time, I will open the public hearing for the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget. I will state that the proposed military rate, which is the same military rate as last year, the military rate does not change, of 5.0434 mils is a revenue increase of 4.31% compared to the rollback rate of 4.2349 mils. Is anyone in the audience who would like to address council? Okay, now I will close the public hearing portion. And Mr. Grue, can you read the military levy Resolution 3049-15 for us by Pat Hall?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. A resolution establishing the military rates to be levied for fiscal year 2015-2016 by City of Oviedo City Code, adopting military rates for the 2015-2016 fiscal year, but the city will be up at the overall rate of 5.2820 mils, which is 5.0434 mils for the city's operations, and 0.2386 mils for payment on the 2003 general obligation bond issued, expressing legislative and administrative crimes and intent, and providing for implementing administrative actions, saving provision, conflict, severability, and an effective date. That's the resolution by Pat Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Grue. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the military levy Resolution 301-15. Samu.
Second.
Motion is second. I'll check it again. And I can't thank your staff. They're all part of the team. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I agree. You guys do a great job.
Councilor Gray. Councilor Hagan.
That's why I called you, Mayor. I was in the sun. And staff also, I keep putting together the budget for the revenue needs and increase the provision, making care of health insurance, making care of raises for the employees, opening a deal on the park, and just by what we're able to accomplish, if not that great of a regular increase this year. So congratulations to everybody, and thank you for bringing us an honest budget.
So at this time, I'd like to call the question. The motion on table is to adopt Resolution 3049-15. All favor of the motion please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Upon that adoption, I will publicly announce that the operating military is now set at 5.0434 mils, as in its earlier, and earlier, as our military did not change, which is 4.34% higher than the rollback military of 4.8349 mils. And combined with the general obligation bond issue for Oviedo Park of 0.2386 mils, the overall military is 5.2820 mils, which is actually slightly less than last year. Mr. Grue, can you read Resolution Number 3050-15, which is the budget resolution by Pat Hall?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. A resolution adopting the City of Oviedo's annual operating budget for the 2015-2016 fiscal year, beginning October 1, 2015, and ending September 30, 2016, expressing legislative and administrative findings and intent, and providing for implementing administrative actions, savings provision, conflicts, severability, and an effective date. And that's the resolution by Pat Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Grue. I'd like to confirm the motion to adopt Resolution Number 3050-15. Samu.
Second.
Motion is second. Deputy Mayor. Councilor Hagan. Again, just echo what I said, you did a great job by staff. Motion on the table is to adopt Resolution 3050-15, adopting annual budget for fiscal year 2015-2016 in the amount of $60,112,525, net of net of all inter fund transfers. All those who favor the motion to adopt please signify by saying aye. 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 Motion carries. We will close the public hearing on the budget, and we will move on to the approval of the minutes for September 10, 2015. I'd like to ask, Mr. Grue, do you see some more? Motion second and discussion. There are no further questions. All favor of the Council, Mr. Mayor. September 10, 2015, regular session as planned. Please signify by saying aye. 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 Motion carries. We will close the public hearing on the budget, and we will move on to the approval of the minutes for September 10, 2015. I'd like to ask, Mr. Grue, do you see some more? Motion second and discussion. There are no further questions. All favor of the Council, Mr. Mayor. September 10, 2015, regular session as planned. Please signify by saying aye. 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 Aye.[652.12][652.12][S01. Aye.[653.12][653.12][S01. Aye.[654.12][654.12][S01. Aye.[655.12][655.12][S01. Aye.[656.12][656.12][S01. Aye.[657.12][657.12][S01. Aye.[658.12][658.12][S01. Aye.[659.12][659.12][S01. Aye.[660.12][660.12][S01. Aye.[661.12][661.12][S01. Aye.[662.12][662.12][S01. Aye.[663.12][663.12][S01. Aye.[664.12][664.12][S01. Aye.[665.12][665.12][S01. Aye.[666.12][666.12][S01. Aye.[667.12][667.12][S01. Aye.[668.12][668.12][S01. Aye.[669.12][669.12][S01. Aye.[670.12][670.12][S01. Aye.[671.12][671.12][S01. Aye.[672.12][672.12][S01. Aye.[673.12][673.12][S01. Aye.[674.12][674.12][S01. Aye.[675.12][675.12][S01. Aye.[676.12][676.12][S01. Aye.[677.12][677.12][S01. Aye.[678.12][678.12][S01. Aye.[679.12][679.12][S01. Aye.[680.12][680.12][S01. Aye.[681.12][681.12][S01. Aye.[682.12][682.12][S01. Aye.[683.12][683.12][S01. Aye.[684.12][684.12][S01. Aye.[685.12][685.12][S01. Aye.[686.12][686.12][S01. Aye.[687.12][687.12][S01. Aye.[688.12][688.12][S01. Aye.[689.12][689.12][S01. Aye.[690.12][690.12][S01. Aye.[691.12][691.12][S01. Aye.[692.12][692.12][S01. Aye.[693.12][693.12][S01. Aye.[694.12][694.12][S01. Aye.[695.12][695.12][S01. Aye.[696.12][696.12][S01. Aye.[697.12][697.12][S01. Aye.[698.12][698.12][S01. Aye.[699.12][699.12][S01. Aye.[700.12][700.12][S01. Aye.[701.12][701.12][S01. Aye.[702.12][702.12][S01. Aye.[703.12][703.12][S01. Aye.[704.12][704.12][S01. Aye.[705.12][705.12][S01. Aye.[706.12][706.12][S01. Aye.[707.12][707.12][S01. Aye.[708.12][708.12][S01. Aye.[709.12][709.12][S01. Aye.[710.12][710.12][S01. Aye.[711.12][711.12][S01. Aye.[712.12][712.12][S01. Aye.[713.12][713.12][S01. Aye.[714.12][714.12][S01. Aye.[715.12][715.12][S01. Aye.[716.12][716.12][S01. Aye.[717.12][717.12][S01. Aye.[718.12][718.12][S01. Aye.[719.12][719.12][S01. Aye.[720.12][720.12][S01. Aye.[721.12][721.12][S01. Aye.[722.12][722.12][S01. Aye.[723.12][723.12][S01. Aye.[724.12][724.12][S01. Aye.[725.12][725.12][S01. Aye.[726.12][726.12][S01. Aye.[727.12][727.12][S01. Aye.[728.12][728.12][S01. Aye.[729.12][729.12][S01. Aye.[730.12][730.12][S01. Aye.[731.12][731.12][S01. Aye.[732.12][732.12][S01. Aye.[733.12][733.12][S01. Aye.[734.12][734.12][S01. Aye.[735.12][735.12][S01. Aye.[736.12][736.12][S01. Aye.[737.12][737.12][S01. Aye.[738.12][738.12][S01. Aye.[739.12][739.12][S01. Aye.[740.12][740.12][S01. Aye.[741.12][741.12][S01. Aye.[742.12][742.12][S01. Aye.[743.12][743.12][S01. Aye.[744.12][744.12][S01. Aye.[745.12][745.12][S01. Aye.[746.12][746.12][S01. Aye.[747.12][747.12][S01. Aye.[748.12][748.12][S01. Aye.[749.12][749.12][S01. Aye.[750.12][750.12][S01. Aye.[751.12][751.12][S01. Aye.[752.12][752.12][S01. Aye.[753.12][753.12][S01. Aye.[754.12][754.12][S01. Aye.[755.12][755.12][S01. Aye.[756.12][756.12][S01. Aye.[757.12][757.12][S01. Aye.[758.12][758.12][S01. Aye.[759.12][759.12][S01. Aye.[760.12][760.12][S01. Aye.[761.12][761.12][S01. Aye.[762.12][762.12][S01. Aye.[763.12][763.12][S01. Aye.[764.12][764.12][S01. Aye.[765.12][765.12][S01. Aye.[766.12][766.12][S01. Aye.[767.12][767.12][S01. Aye.[768.12][768.12][S01. Aye.[769.12][769.12][S01. Aye.[770.12][770.12][S01. Aye.[771.12][771.12][S01. Aye.[772.12][772.12][S01. Aye.[773.12][773.12][S01. Aye.[774.12][774.12][S01. Aye.[775.12][775.12][S01. Aye.[776.12][776.12][S01. Aye.[777.12][777.12][S01. Aye.[778.12][778.12][S01. Aye.[779.12][779.12][S01. Aye.[780.12][780.12][S01. Aye.[781.12][781.12][S01. Aye.[782.12][782.12][S01. Aye.[783.12][783.12][S01. Aye.[784.12][784.12][S01. Aye.[785.12][785.12][S01. Aye.[786.12][786.12][S01. Aye.[787.12][787.12][S01. Aye.[788.12][788.12][S01. Aye.[789.12][789.12][S01. Aye.[790.12][790.12][S01. Aye.[791.12][791.12][S01. Aye.[792.12][792.12][S01. Aye.[793.12][793.12][S01. Aye.[794.12][794.12][S01. Aye.[795.12][795.12][S01. Aye.[796.12][796.12][S01. Aye.[797.12][797.12][S01. Aye.[798.12][798.12][S01. Aye.[799.12][799.12][S01. Aye.[800.12][800.12][S01. Aye.[801.12][801.12][S01. Aye.[802.12][802.12][S01. Aye.[803.12][803.12][S01. Aye.[804.12][804.12][S01. Aye.[805.12][805.12][S01. Aye.[806.12][806.12][S01. Aye.[807.12][807.12][S01. Aye.[808.12][808.12][S01. Aye.[809.12][809.12][S01. Aye.[810.12][810.12][S01. Aye.[811.12][811.12][S01. Aye.[812.12][812.12][S01. Aye.[813.12][813.12][S01. Aye.[814.12][814.12][S01. Aye.[815.12][815.12][S01. Aye.[816.12][816.12][S01. Aye.[817.12][817.12][S01. Aye.[818.12][818.12][S01. Aye.[819.12][819.12][S01. Aye.[820.12][820.12][S01. Aye.[821.12][821.12][S01. Aye.[822.12][822.12][S01. Aye.[823.12][823.12][S01. Aye.[824.12][824.12][S01. Aye.[825.12][825.12][S01. Aye.[826.12][826.12][S01. Aye.[827.12][827.12][S01. Aye.[828.12][828.12][S01. Aye.[829.12][829.12][S01. Aye.[830.12][830.12][S01. Aye.[831.12][831.12][S01. Aye.[832.12][832.12][S01. Aye.[833.12][833.12][S01. Aye.[834.12][834.12][S01. Aye.[835.12][835.12][S01. Aye.[836.12][836.12][S01. Aye.[837.12][837.12][S01. Aye.[838.12][838.12][S01. Aye.[839.12][839.12][S01. Aye.[840.12][840.12][S01. Aye.[841.12][841.12][S01. Aye.[842.12][842.12][S01. Aye.[843.12][843.12][S01. Aye.[844.12][844.12][S01. Aye.[845.12][845.12][S01. Aye.[846.12][846.12][S01. Aye.[847.12][847.12][S01. Aye.[848.12][848.12][S01. Aye.[849.12][849.12][S01. Aye.[850.12][850.12][S01. Aye.[851.12][851.12][S01. Aye.[852.12][852.12][S01. Aye.[853.12][853.12][S01. Aye.[854.12][854.12][S01. Aye.[855.12][855.12][S01. Aye.[856.12][856.12][S01. Aye.[857.12][857.12][S01. Aye.[858.12][858.12][S01. Aye.[859.12][859.12][S01. Aye.[860.12][860.12][S01. Aye.[861.12][861.12][S01. Aye.[862.12][862.12][S01. Aye.[863.12][863.12][S01. Aye.[864.12][864.12][S01. Aye.[865.12][865.12][S01. Aye.[866.12][866.12][S01. Aye.[867.12][867.12][S01. Aye.[868.12][868.12][S01. Aye.[869.12][869.12][S01. Aye.[870.12][870.12][S01. Aye.[871.12][871.12][S01. Aye.[872.12][872.12][S01. Aye.[873.12][873.12][S01. Aye.[874.12][874.12][S01. Aye.[875.12][875.12][S01. Aye.[876.12][876.12][S01. Aye.[877.12][877.12][S01. Aye.[878.12][878.12][S01. Aye.[879.12][879.12][S01. Aye.[880.12][880.12][S01. Aye.[881.12][881.12][S01. Aye.[882.12][882.12][S01. Aye.[883.12][883.12][S01. Aye.[884.12][884.12][S01. Aye.[885.12][885.12][S01. Aye.[886.12][886.12][S01. Aye.[887.12][887.12][S01. Aye.[888.12][888.12][S01. Aye.[889.12][889.12][S01. Aye.[890.12][890.12][S01. Aye.[891.12][891.12][S01. Aye.[892.12][892.12][S01. Aye.[893.12][893.12][S01. Aye.[894.12][894.12][S01. Aye.[895.12][895.12][S01. Aye.[896.12][896.12][S01. Aye.[897.12][897.12][S01. Aye.[898.12][898.12][S01. Aye.[899.12][899.12][S01. Aye.[900.12][900.12][S01. Aye.[901.12][901.12][S01. Aye.[902.12][902.12][S01. Aye.[903.12][903.12][S01. Aye.[904.12][904.12][S01. Aye.[905.12][905.12][S01. Aye.[906.12][906.12][S01. Aye.[907.12][907.12][S01. Aye.[908.12][908.12][S01. Aye.[909.12][909.12][S01. Aye.[910.12][910.12][S01. Aye.[911.12][911.12][S01. Aye.[912.12][912.12][S01. Aye.[913.12][913.12][S01. Aye.[914.12][914.12][S01. Aye.[915.12][915.12][S01. Aye.[916.12][916.12][S01. Aye.[917.12][917.12][S01. Aye.[918.12][918.12][S01. Aye.[919.12][919.12][S01. Aye.[920.12][920.12][S01. Aye.[921.12][921.12][S01. Aye.[922.12][922.12][S01. Aye.[923.12][923.12][S01. Aye.[924.12][924.12][S01. Aye.[925.12][925.12][S01. Aye.[926.12][926.12][S01. Aye.[927.12][927.12][S01. Aye.[928.12][928.12][S01. Aye.[929.12][929.12][S01. Aye.[930.12][930.12][S01. Aye.[931.12][931.12][S01. Aye.[932.12][932.12][S01. Aye.[933.12][933.12][S01. Aye.[934.12][934.12][S01. Aye.[935.12][935.12][S01. Aye.[936.12][936.12][S01. Aye.[937.12][937.12][S01. Aye.[938.12][938.12][S01. Aye.[939.12][939.12][S01. Aye.[940.12][940.12][S01. Aye.[941.12][941.12][S01. Aye.[942.12][942.12][S01. Aye.[943.12][943.12][S01. Aye.[944.12][944.12][S01. Aye.[945.12][945.12][S01. Aye.[946.12][946.12][S01. Aye.[947.12][947.12][S01. Aye.[948.12][948.12][S01. Aye.[949.12][949.12][S01. Aye.[950.12][950.12][S01. Aye.[951.12][951.12][S01. Aye.[952.12][952.12][S01. Aye.[953.12][953.12][S01. Aye.[954.12][954.12][S01. Aye.[955.12][955.12][S01. Aye.[956.12][956.12][S01. Aye.[957.12][957.12][S01. Aye.[958.12][958.12][S01. Aye.[959.12][959.12][S01. Aye.[960.12][960.12][S01. Aye.[961.12][961.12][S01. Aye.[962.12][962.12][S01. Aye.[963.12][963.12][S01. Aye.[964.12][964.12][S01. Aye.[965.12][965.12][S01. Aye.[966.12][966.12][S01. Aye.[967.12][967.12][S01. Aye.[968.12][968.12][S01. Aye.[969.12][969.12][S01. Aye.[970.12][970.12][S01. Aye.[971.12][971.12][S01. Aye.[972.12][972.12][S01. Aye.[973.12][973.12][S01. Aye.[974.12][974.12][S01. Aye.[975.12][975.12][S01. Aye.[976.12][976.12][S01. Aye.[977.12][977.12][S01. Aye.[978.12][978.12][S01. Aye.[979.12][979.12][S01. Aye.[980.12][980.12][S01. Aye.[981.12][981.12][S01. Aye.[982.12][982.12][S01. Aye.[983.12][983.12][S01. Aye.[984.12][984.12][S01. Aye.[985.12][985.12][S01. Aye.[986.12][986.12][S01. Aye.[987.12][987.12][S01. Aye.[988.12][988.12][S01. Aye.[989.12][989.12][S01. Aye.[990.12][990.12][S01. Aye.[991.12][991.12][S01. Aye.[992.12][992.12][S01. Aye.[993.12][993.12][S01. Aye.[994.12][994.12][S01. Aye.[995.12][995.12][S01. Aye.[996.12][996.12][S01. Aye.[997.12][997.12][S01. Aye.[998.12][998.12][S01. Aye.[999.12][999.12][S01. Aye.[1000.12][1000.12][S01. Aye.[1001.12][1001.12][S01. Aye.[1002.12][1002.12][S01. Aye.[1003.12][1003.12][S01. Aye.[1004.12][1004.12][S01. Aye.[1005.12][1005.12][S01. Aye.[1006.12][1006.12][S01. Aye.[1007.12][1007.12][S01. Aye.[1008.12][1008.12][S01. Aye.[1009.12][1009.12][S01. Aye.[1010.12][1010.12][S01. Aye.[1011.12][1011.12][S01. Aye.[1012.12][1012.12][S01. Aye.[1013.12][1013.12][S01. Aye.[1014.12][1014.12][S01. Aye.[1015.12][1015.12][S01. Aye.[1016.12][1016.12][S01. Aye.[1017.12][1017.12][S01. Aye.[1018.12][1018.12][S01. Aye.[1019.12][1019.12][S01. Aye.[1020.12][1020.12][S01. Aye.[1021.12][1021.12][S01. Aye.[1022.12][1022.12][S01. Aye.[1023.12][1023.12][S01. Aye.[1024.12][1024.12][S01. Aye.[1025.12][1025.12][S01. Aye.[1026.12][1026.12][S01. Aye.[1027.12][1027.12][S01. Aye.[1028.12][1028.12][S01. Aye.[1029.12][1029.12][S01. Aye.[1030.12][1030.12][S01. Aye.[1031.12][1031.12][S01. Aye.[1032.12][1032.12][S01. Aye.[1033.12][1033.12][S01. Aye.[1034.12][1034.12][S01. Aye.[1035.12][1035.12][S01. Aye.[1036.12][1036.12][S01. Aye.[1037.12][1037.12][S01. Aye.[1038.12][1038.12][S01. Aye.[1039.12][1039.12][S01. Aye.[1040.12][1040.12][S01. Aye.[1041.12][1041.12][S01. Aye.[1042.12][1042.12][S01. Aye.[1043.12][1043.12][S01. Aye.[1044.12][1044.12][S01. Aye.[1045.12][1045.12][S01. Aye.[1046.12][1046.12][S01. Aye.[1047.12][1047.12][S01. Aye.[1048.12][1048.12][S01. Aye.[1049.12][1049.12][S01. Aye.[1050.12][1050.12][S01. Aye.[1051.12][1051.12][S01. Aye.[1052.12][1052.12][S01. Aye.[1053.12][1053.12][S01. Aye.[1054.12][1054.12][S01. Aye.[1055.12][1055.12][S01. Aye.[1056.12][1056.12][S01. Aye.[1057.12][1057.12][S01. Aye.[1058.12][1058.12][S01. Aye.[1059.12][1059.12][S01. Aye.[1060.12][1060.12][S01. Aye.[1061.12][1061.12][S01. Aye.[1062.12][1062.12][S01. Aye.[1063.12][1063.12][S01. Aye.[1064.12][1064.12][S01. Aye.[1065.12][1065.12][S01. Aye.[1066.12][1066.12][S01. Aye.[1067.12][1067.12][S01. Aye.[1068.12][1068.12][S01. Aye.[1069.12][1069.12][S01. Aye.[1070.12][1070.12][S01. Aye.[1071.12][1071.12][S01. Aye.[1072.12][1072.12][S01. Aye.[1073.12][1073.12][S01. Aye.[1074.12][1074.12][S01. Aye.[1075.12][1075.12][S01. Aye.[1076.12][1076.12][S01. Aye.[1077.12][1077.12][S01. Aye.[1078.12][1078.12][S01. Aye.[1079.12][1079.12][S01. Aye.[1080.12][1080.12][S01. Aye.[1081.12][1081.12][S01. Aye.[1082.12][1082.12][S01. Aye.[1083.12][1083.12][S01. Aye.[1084.12][1084.12][S01. Aye.[1085.12][1085.12][S01. Aye.[1086.12][1086.12][S01. Aye.[1087.12][1087.12][S01. Aye.[1088.12][1088.12][S01. Aye.[1089.12][1089.12][S01. Aye.[1090.12][1090.12][S01. Aye.[1091.12][1091.12][S01. Aye.[1092.12][1092.12][S01. Aye.[1093.12][1093.12][S01. Aye.[1094.12][1094.12][S01. Aye.[1095.12][1095.12][S01. Aye.[1096.12][1096.12][S01. Aye.[1097.12][1097.12][S01. Aye.[1098.12][1098.12][S01. Aye.[1099.12][1099.12][S01. Aye.[1100.12][1100.12][S01. Aye.[1101.12][1101.12][S01. Aye.[1102.12][1102.12][S01. Aye.[1103.12][1103.12][S01. Aye.[1104.12][1104.12][S01. Aye.[1105.12][1105.12][S01. Aye.[1106.12][1106.12][S01. Aye.
1629. Slap on there, get clout. Orders under 1629 is going to be Oviedo Mall's off-site signage and statutory development agreement. Mr. Grue, can you read that by God almighty voice, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Orders of the City of Oviedo, Florida enact in a statutory development agreement relating to property known by Venice Health Systems, Sunbelt E and Oviedo Front LLC as the owner of a signage agreement which property is described as law-ruined Oviedo Crossing Phase 2A as reported in Platform 52 pages 15 and 16, Public Records of Seminole County. Thus, that part conveyed in Official Records Book 3501, page 1466, Public Records of Seminole County. And more particularly pertaining to that property subject to a signage agreement recorded in Official Records Book 8403, page 1774, of the Public Records of Seminole County. The development grant being approved in accordance with the provisions of the Florida Local Government Development Agreement Act as set forth in Sections 163.3220 and 163.3243 for the statutes. Provided for savings provision, provided for conflict, provided for non-complication and implementation, provided for severability, and provided for an effective date. And that's your order, Mr. Popovich, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grue, Mr. Scott.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. There's a request for the council to approve a statutory development agreement pertaining to the installation of signage in the northeast corner of the intersection of Navarro Drive and Red Bull Lake Road. The statutory development agreement addresses the signage, it regulates it, it provides standards that are compatible with signs that are within the area, specifically that are in the unencumbered parts of Seminole County. It also assigns a public benefit to the city as part of this being a statutory development agreement. There's got to be a public benefit, and so does the development by designating a three-foot by thirty-two-foot panel for city use. The proposed sign has a sign area of three hundred and twenty square feet and a maximum height of fifteen feet. The city will have approximately ninety-six square feet for the top panel to place its emblem and slogan. The setback from Navarro Drive is ten feet, the setback from Red Bull Lake Road is fifteen feet. The city attorney has reviewed the statutory development agreement, has no objections. The local planning agency considered this ordinance on August 25, 2015, and recommended adoption. It's recommended that city council conduct a public hearing and adopt Order Number 1629.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. This is the applicant president, do you have a presentation first? Can you address the record, please?
Angela Shaw, my address is 390 North Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida, 3281. I'm here representing the applicants, and we just wanted to thank you for your consideration in passing this statutory development agreement for the installation of the off-site signage. I want to thank staff and the city attorney for their support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, I do not have any requests. Does anybody in the audience want to address council on Orders under 1629? Seeing in hearing none, we will close the public comment portion and move on to the pleasure of council.
It's the mayor. Counselor, would you like to make a motion to adopt Orders under 1629?
Second.
Motion second. Councilor mentioned your floor, looking forward to that signing, right?
Oh, yeah. That and the other one coming, so.
Let me try to select that, please. It's not blinking on, it doesn't blink at all.
Listen, anyway, the world, we went from fifty-two square feet to three sixty, so we're there. Yeah, we got a call, we go, we did not, so, good job.
That'll be very, yeah, of course.
I think it's beautiful, I like it, it's very classy-looking.
Thank you. Counselor Chang.
Nice job on that. You guys finally got through, got a pulse on my side.
Really good.
How about the, I know there's one other one you might want to make, may I go on that?
We're making that way on, we're actually in negotiations on the issue right now.
And is that the other one by ABC letter?
Correct.
How about the other one?
The other one, have we ever gone anywhere? Nothing's changed on that situation.
And the big one on the property that Mary you heard?
2016.
There you go. See, you'll catch a big sign.
I believe mine, you know where the hall is, how that's right, right? At least you know what it is.
At least you knew people, I mean, I mean.
All right, you're getting it. Hearing none, I will call both, the motion on the table is to adopt Orders 1629. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Along to item number twenty-six, it's first reading of Orders, this is Orders Number 1628 as related to the use or smoking of tobacco products in city parks and all city facilities. Mr. Grue, can you read that by God almighty voice?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Orders of the City of Oviedo, Florida relating to the use or smoking of tobacco products, including e-cigarettes in city parks and all city facilities and properties, provided for amendment in Section 33 dash twenty-five G2, City Code. Provided for prohibition, provided for legislative fines, provided for implementing administrative actions, provided for a savings provision, provided for penalties and enforcement, provided for conflicts, provided for severability, provided for complication, and provided for an effective date. And that's your order, Mr. Popovich, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grue, Mr. Scott.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Orders Number 1628 amends the city's code of ordinances to the car plus following. It adds language prohibiting and making unlawful a smoking or holding of tobacco products, including the use of e-cigarettes in or in the possession of tobacco products in and upon parks, properties, facilities, under control and management of the city of Oviedo. It adds language to the code ordinances prohibiting and making unlawful for any person to smoke or carry a light cigar, cigarette, cigarette or pipe, or use any sparks, flame, match, or fire-producing device normally used for tobacco smoking, or to use or consume tobacco products, including e-cigarettes, in any park, property, or facility that is owned or under management of the city of Oviedo. It adds language requiring the posting of signage for smoking prohibited, such as smoking prohibited by law. It amends Section 3525 G2 of the code ordinances to clarify, to state that it is unlawful for a person to possess or consume any tobacco product, including e-cigarettes, in or upon city parks as set forth in either City Code or the rules promulgated by the city. All recreation parks in the city shall be tobacco and drug-free zones. It's recommended that city council schedule a public hearing for Monday, October 5, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. This time I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a second public hearing for Orders Number 1628 on October 5, 2015, approximately 6:30 p.m. Here at Oviedo City Hall, 400 Alexander Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765. Motion second, council check everything. Counselor, thank you. Deputy Mayor. Hearing none, I will call both, the motion on table is to schedule a second public hearing, October 5, 2015, approximately 6:30 p.m. here in the Oviedo City Hall, council chambers. All those who agree with the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Moving along, pardon, orders, which is Orders Number 1630, it's item number twenty-seven. This one is Venice Fire Protection Protective Code of Orders. Mr. Grue, can you read that by God almighty voice, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Orders of the City of Oviedo, Florida substantially revised in amendment, Chapter 26 of the Code of Orders of Oviedo regarding the adoption of the Florida Fire Prevention Code and related codes and manuals relating to fire safety and life safety. Provided for legislative funds and intent, provided for the regulation of firearms, provided for the regulation of gated communities, provided for the emergency prohibition of burning or use of fireworks and related matters. Provided for penalties and remedies, provided for a savings provision, provided for conflicts, provided for severability, provided for complication, and provided for an effective date. And that's your order, Mr. Popovich, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grue, Mr. Scott.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. This is a request for council to amend the city's code of ordinances relating to the city's fire protection and safety codes. As we do from time to time with our building codes, we have to update our fire protection and safety codes as well. That's what this ordinance accomplishes. There's been a new version of the Florida Fire Protection Code that's been adopted, and so this brings those codes into our own city code ordinances. Tonight, it's recommended that city council schedule a public hearing for Monday, October 5, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. This time I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a second public hearing for Orders Number 1630 on October 5, 2015, at approximately 6:30 p.m. Here at Oviedo City Hall, in the Oviedo City Council Chambers, 400 Alexander Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765. So, second, motion second. Counselor check everything. Counselor mention? Check the air. I'm sorry, you should, okay, sorry. No, four is, don't go along with it. All right, hearing none, I will call both, the motion on table is to schedule a second public hearing, October 5, 2015. All those who agree with the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Moving on, on to resolutions, this is Resolution Number 18, which is, Resolution 30, nineteen dash twenty-five, item number twenty-eight, is proving the water sewer reclaiming water revenue sufficiency analysis. Mr. Scott, I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the city council to approve the water sewer and reclaim water revenue sufficiency analysis prepared by Willdam Financial Services. Willdam has put together this analysis for the city. The purpose of the analysis was to determine if revenues were adequate to support city utilities over a ten-year forecast period such that all prior operating expenses, debt service, capital expenses, and transfers could be funded by reserves and systems. Additionally, the forecast was to identify any additional revenues required to maintain adequate reserve levels and debt service requirements that the utility desires as a management policy. Willdam first presented the findings at the April 23, 2015 work session and presented the recommendations there. The recommendations were that the city refine the rate resolution in good language would set a minimum annual rate increase of three percent, that the city implement proposed rates and charges that were part as recommended in the report on October 1 of each year, and that the city have made sure regularly to ensure that the projected revenue is sufficient to fund projected expenses going forward as the assumptions made during the analysis. Mr. Jeff McGarvey and Mr. Jonathan Barnes, Willdam Financial Services, are here tonight, and they are available to address any questions that the council may have. It's recommended that the city council adopt Resolution Number 3019 dash fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. This time I'll open up the public comment portion again. I do have one great request from Mr. Popovich. Sir. Sir, if you could just speak your name and address the record.
My name is Ron Popovich, I live at 1,000 Lingo Circle in Oviedo, 32765.
Yes, sir. What are your shows for, you may.
My questions and comments tonight concern the city of Oviedo water department rates and method of billing. Before the council considers tax and rate changes, I believe the billing cycles need to be adjusted to a realistic method. The attached data I submitted to the council shows us a need to adjust to read cycle. The five-level cost rate schedule is presumed to encourage conservation by penalizing high usage, but is wrong to penalize users by extending read periods to force them into higher brackets. Since meter reader jog slots have been eliminated by a new electronic system, monthly read schedules can easily be set up about the same way a day every month as other utilities do. Looking at the attached data, meters are read randomly from Monday to Friday, so it would not affect the work schedule. As you know, the Gregorian calendar has been used in America since seventeen fifty-two. It has seven months with thirty-one days, four months with thirty days, and one month with either twenty-eight or nine. And it's ironic that over the last twelve-year monthly billing cycles, there have only been two cycles of thirty days and absolutely no thirty-one-day cycles in twelve years. The bills themselves need an update. One certain states that the bill is due ten days after the billing date. The last few months, they were not even received by then. And from what I was told, the billing company is not even in the state of Florida. The water consumption charge is on a single line. In order to increase awareness and promote conservation, it should be broken down to show the five levels and the fact that one gallon of water can cost six-and-a-half times another. It also stands now that your usage block is useless for trying to compare a thirty-to-four-day period with a twenty-eight-day period. Again, I would like the council to consider overhauling the billing system before changing rates and taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else feel that would like to address council on the side? Go over the request I have. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing portion immediately and move on to the pleasure of council.
It's the mayor, the motion to adopt Resolution 319, that's your.
Motion grab second. Motion second, council check everything.
Yeah, well, you know, actually, I appreciate what Mr. Popovich just said. There are a couple of things. I know that the building company, they've had some problems, but it's going to be that the building company over the past few months. And I agree, there are things that need to be upgraded, different, on that bill differentiated and looked at to be updated. So, and I agree with kind of all those things. And I know, see, our person in charge that is in here had heard those comments. So, I'll make sure that those are incorporated, because I agree with those comments. The unit's updated, the unit's updated. So, automated methodologies, kind of the things that are, that are done, so I appreciate that. Oh, we usually have a chart, it has to be subsidized and run itself, and that's, hasn't been happening. So, we need to make sure that we're not subsidizing our water without regular testing.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I agree with Counselor Chang and everything he said. You know, one thing we do here in the city is keep trying to improve. And all the, a lot of those items that you brought up, I'm sure that our department had heard it and will look into it and continue to improve on the whole system.
Counselor. Thank you, and I agree. I was taking notes, and if somebody please reach out to Mr. Popovich, get his phone number. I think he brought up a lot of very important, very important things that need to be looked at. For me, I heard them all. The key thing that I want to make sure, and I don't know if this is the case, but it's obviously happened to him, but if somebody gets a bill that's thirty-five days and, you know, five days more than a thirty-day bill, and they're using the next higher bracket to pay more for a gallon of water, I want to know if that's really correct. I mean, I want to hear the other side, too. But, you know, you got a bill in thirty days and you were in the zero to ten-thousand bracket, and five more days pushing it lower, and causing it to go up, that's something that really, you know, that stood out amongst the other things that he did. So, if you could please get his phone number and make sure that you address his issues and let us know what you come up with. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Grue, you may address some of these items. I know some of this is already in the works. Yes, Counselor Chang.
Yes, Jerry Booth, Finance Director, City of Oviedo. We have, we're aware of Mr. Popovich's issues and problems to us in the past. We are working on replacing the current penal bill that we get from the out-of-state vendor. We have to work within, say, the last year regarding to their revenues to us. And there's certain things that are outside of our control. And we're waiting for the expiration of the contract, which will be in January 2016. We're currently looking at piggybacking with another vendor who currently does all of these cities in Seminole County, the exceptional Castle area, their names access. And we're putting together a plan right now to work with the citizens as well and to incorporate, you could folks, into the redesign of the current bill into something that will be more user-friendly and get the information out in a more usable format. So, that will be taking place in the next three to four months. Call whoever, who's my assistant, who's in the audience as well, this actually is a project for us. We're spearheading that. And so, we believe that that issue will be rectified. I want to change the new vendor and that things will be mailed on time. In regard to the due in ten days, can I take a look at that verbiage? Instead of looking at due in ten days or due upon receipt, we're going to be looking at when is the bill actually due? And amending the language to more soften that up a little bit and incorporate the entire billing process and due process into the bill itself. So, and I don't have that information from here right now to give that to you, but we're going to soften that up a little bit. Because we agree, it's very frustrating to get these issues every single week when the bills go out. And with the current vendor, it's just unworkable. So.
Jerry, the latest bad last statement that was brought up, that if you get a bill that's thirty-four days more than thirty and you use raw water, could look into a higher bracket?
Absolutely, that is very true. With the water conservation rates that we have, unfortunately, if the billing cycle goes beyond the thirty days, yes, that can happen. But conversely, if the following month, the billing cycle is twenty-six days, then it can happen until it works in your favor as well.
Right.
We are aware of that issue. We've analyzed the bills of the last couple of years, and in certain cases, you can end up paying slightly more in any given year, and in certain cases, you end up paying slightly less. So, it depends on your consumption, it depends on the timing of the billing cycles themselves. But actually, in the long run, from our analytics, it kind of evens out. So, logistically, it is impossible with the current technology that we have employed here at the city to do thirty-day billing cycles. We just can't do that, okay? Our current technology requires that billing, meter reader actually go out and drive through the neighborhood, take the electronic reads, and actually bring those back, and we incorporate those into the billing processes. What hurts us is that sometimes the thirty days falls on Saturday, sometimes it falls on Sunday, sometimes it falls on holiday. So, with the complexities of cycles that we use, it's very difficult to squeeze them all into the thirty-day cycle. We would love to be able to do that, because Mr. Popovich's comments are absolutely right. We can upgrade our technology, it's not cheap, but that can be done to where we can probably incorporate something that sits on the cell tower up back here, and we send the signal out, gather the reads, and then the ones that we don't get, we send the meter reader out to get, you know, sorry, I don't do.
Exactly.
There's cell technology available, there's radio tower technology available, there's all kinds of technology available. But again, that would be an upgrade over what we currently employ, and there will be a dollar amount associated with that. And we would love to look at that if we're directed to do that. But that's currently where we're at. But yes, absolutely, Mr. Popovich is absolutely correct. There are times when the billing cycles are thirty-four days, there's times when they're twenty-six days. We've gone through and analyzed those accounts, and it goes both ways. So, but in the long run, from our analytics, kind of evens out. Sometimes people actually win.
Is this new technology, you know, upgraded technology, super expensive, got to be able to.
We have to price it out. What I think we should have done when we upgraded our technology back in 2010 is we should have gone to be more sophisticated, either cell tower technology or radio read technology from our tower up back. But we didn't look at that back then for whatever reason I was in here.
So, if anything, to get some prices.
Nope, absolutely not.
Counsel, what do we have to say?
I would say it evens out. If we made the best of these meters, you know, I would strongly support for the next time we operate.
I would definitely look at that.
Well, the technology, well, next one he does, it's all right, so if this new technology, you get a signal from the office.
I believe the proper way, not to provide that software as well.
Yeah.
That solution is probably easier.
Doesn't make any difference. But I know the city that your billing calendar also follows the thirteen-week quarter, where you're going to have four weeks, four weeks, five weeks.
Correct, that is correct.
I mean, you got to finish on a quarter. So, you know, I can make the argument that your February bill is only going to be twenty-four days, twenty-five days, whatever is in February, and then your next bill's going to be thirty-one, so you get the same thing that occurs.
That's what happens, exactly.
Okay, you know, so you've got, to make up a quarter, you've got twenty-eight, twenty-eight, thirty-five, that's a bill. All right, see what he does? If it's something that isn't available, it's council, and you mentioned, maybe anything else? That's what you guys do. Any other questions, Mr. Grue? All right, with all that being said, the motion on table is to adopt, all those who agree with the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Carries. Moving on, on to item number twenty-nine, which is Resolution Number 3069 dash twenty-five, which is a site development order number 450 dash twenty-five. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the city council to approve site development order number 450 dash fifteen, shots at Oviedo on Park. And no, the proposed development is located on the northeast intersection of Mitchell Henry Road and City Plaza One. Total land area is 2.16 acres. The subject property's future land use destination is downtown mixed-use. The zoning district is the mixed-use, new downtown mixed-use village core. The applicant proposes to subdivide the land into three lots in one tract. Lot one is a 0.37 acre tract that contains 2,115 square feet of coffee shop with drive-through. Lot two has an area of 0.72 acres and will encompass a restaurant and retail. This is lot three, is 0.99 acres in size, and will be developed later with a use that has yet to be determined. Track A is 0.07 acres and will comprise landscape, entrance, sidewalk, maintenance areas. On-site parking is provided in the interior lots. There's a total of forty-nine on-site parking spaces within lots one and two. The development will have one vehicular access on its north side from Microver Way. Contency has been satisfied for this project. There are numerous deviations to the land development code for this project, some involving the site plan, which primarily deals with landscaping, budgeting, property. And then there are also deviations for the architecture. And this is primarily because our architectural standards in Article Six are established for mixed-use buildings. These are single-use buildings, much like we've done with the apartment complexes that were built in the townhouses, that our architectural standards are primarily for retail on the bottom of the apartments above. These are single-use buildings, and so the staff worked with the applicants to bring forward the best development project that they could bring forward. Unfortunately, it required those deviations. Dr. Correa is here tonight. If you have any questions regarding the deviations, she is available for you to answer those questions. I'm not going through the council requirements immediately. But it is recommended that the city council adopt Resolution Number 3069 dash fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. This is the applicant president. Do you have anything to add? Okay. Sometimes a wise man, he's a public comment. I have no great requests, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council? 3069 dash one-five. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, for the pleasure of council.
It's the mayor. Counselor, may I make motions to adopt Resolution Number 369 dash fifteen?
Second, motion second, Counselor, may I? Counselor Chang, second, thanks for the hard work. Deputy Mayor.
Okay.
Now, let's see if I can, if I have any. I have one little concern. Dr. Correa, you come on up and help me address this. I need to say.
Can you?
As I said earlier, your staff, the developer, profit builder, have done an excellent job in the intent of no drive-throughs, hiding and working the drive-through to the Starbucks building. Also, the renders which you showed us the last time, I mean, really are fitted very well. The one thing I did notice reading through the package is they are dividing each lot to a separate lot, which I understand why is probably ground needs, you know, separate the lines. But unfortunately, that would also entail going to individual minded signs on each lot, which is not be attempted or required. We haven't finished the site package plan just yet. So, how are we going to address that now? I know what you, see, the council.
Yeah, they can't have been to, be able to approve individual, presenting signs on the signs. The idea was to. The idea was to address that with a, with on the park master signage plan. The applicant is aware of that, but unless we have the condition in the S E O that addressed that, the day that is approved, that is today, until we have the master plan, there is a gap that we could, you know, technically, we could accept the request for signage and warning sign and the code would allow. So the best way would be to address through the S E O. Provide a condition in the S E O, say that they are entitled to all signs and temporary signs and to whatever master plan, signage plan, permit of park allows them to have.
Okay, so you're stating that the developer is aware of this, but the intent is not to have mining signs.
Yes, that was discussed.
All right, any other questions, Dr. Correa? Make a motion. Counselor Henry, this is a very amendment to the S E O 450-15, and in that motion, the property owner shall have no title to any signage other than all signs as shown to the site plan, normative temporary signs during construction may be used. And as may be set forth in the Oviedo on Park Master Signage Plan, has to be approved by the City Council. So essentially, what that does is follow the master plan, signage plan, and we all sort it out. You make the motion. I just want you to read it.
You know, I'm not sure what's going to develop out there. I think they will follow the signage code, but, you know, I hate to get locked in on the signage. I mean, I don't need to be hard, but I think sometimes you get lost on these signs. Someday they might need a sign. You know, I'm afraid to say yes to that. You know, they may need something else out there that, for people, I don't think. But I just don't want to get locked in. I'm not afraid of signs. And I say that with all due respect, everybody else.
I'll read my second. There you go.
You know, I just, I don't want to be signed.
I have a motion now.
I would like to adopt ordinance number, Resolution Number 3069-15.
Second.
Second.
Motion second. Counselor check.
That will include the statements, property owner shall have no title to any signage other than all signs as shown and exhibited to the site plan, normative temporary signs during construction, and as be set forth in the Oviedo on Park Master Signage Plan, has to be approved by the City.
Second, you agree?
Yes, I agree.
Now, there's a motion on table with the amendment, and developer, come on up. He is missing. He did. You never miss. How is your neighbor? She's fine. She's good. David, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Excellent. Just made a dress.
David Morse, two-two-two-one Lee Road, West Park Court.
David, you understand that from the beginning, that mining signs were part of the package, correct?
Yes.
So you have no issue with this.
Although I would like to clarify that temporary signs in the interim would include leasing signs.
Yes.
Past construction.
That's all part of that master signage package.
Yes.
You understand? We don't want you to knock it up the coming soon. We want that up. It's great opening.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, that's why it says normative temporary signs during construction. So it's all right.
Okay.
We acknowledge you.
Great.
Thank you, sir.
My pleasure. Thank you very much.
Now, any questions? One of the shovels on the ground?
End of the year, first of the year, the latest.
So like sixty days, ninety days. Is that Mr. Kavanaugh all the way down?
No. We're going to plug over.
Oh, okay. We could be all the way down. He is. All right.
Thank you.
All right, the applicant also agrees to our amendment. Staff, do you pray on your amendment? Bobby, is that good?
It's good.
All right, there's a motion on the table with the amendment. All the paper motion on the table with the amendment. Please satisfy the saying.
Aye.
Pose.
I'm not sure I have a vote, to be honest, which is almost going to go along. Just hold bill, just hold on. If you need a sign, come back later. Yeah, you could.
Don't come back for mining signs. We've got this beautiful plan, but you remember the big sign?
Oh, the project is ready. I was trying to help you out. I like signs. How you get this?
I appreciate it.
I lose every vote for one on sign. I'm just, I need them. I'm just build a project because that's what we need.
It'll be.
Counselor Henry, let's lose them all for it. Seventy-five, seventy-four, one of the most. And we all agree with you.
There you go. I have a space on that one that says the law is playing.
There you go. We'll go far.
A little theater cover. There you go.
All right, so we are moving along. Mark the item number thirty, discussion items. We have none this evening, so we are on to reports. Mr. Pop, you're up.
Yes, Mayor, just wanted to remind everyone on Wednesday.
Thank you.
The Director of the Foreign Department of Economic Opportunity will be in Oviedo. I believe he's going to be attending a bagels and business meeting in the chamber at the mall first, I think around nine o'clock, and then around ten, ten-thirty, I believe, he's coming over to tour Center Lake Park. He, we got, we were contacted by the department last week, and he wants to come tour our facility. We're going to meet over there with him on Wednesday. And just wanted to tell you, I guess it was a chest-thumping moment over the weekend. Sitting there, watching my phone and seeing all the posts on Facebook and Twitter about the concerts. It was really amazing to see the folks in the, in the audience that were providing video of the bands, and so it was, made me feel good. As I was sitting, I was showing it to everybody around me, so I just wanted to say how wonderful it was to see that everyone was having a great time at the concert. That's all.
Right, can I just say something that, you know, there's lots of things to be said about to talk about out there, but, you know, all in all, for those two concerts, Drew, thank you very much. Because, you know, I know from working pretty closely with Drew on the first one, there were just so many things, and not having a clear direction yet, you did pretty good doing Drew. You ran around, you found mirrors, you found all kinds of stuff, people, and, you know, but now we got to help you go follow him in the council. I think some way in that world, we got to have a, I don't know, a word session, just a discussion somewhere to help Drew as he books more, at least, that they, they, everybody goes with him. I mean, it's just amazing sitting out there in Oviedo, hearing these people sing, you know, it was, it was really good. So we'll, we'll help you, but bang up job, drive and wine, you know.
Is that any?
Yes, sir.
No, sir. You are up. I appreciate it, but nothing to see. Thank you. Well, it's nice and large, right? It's not like I'm the out there, but I miss it all the time. Let's see, you are up too, Mr. Shane, Councilmember. You are up.
Yes, I was supposed to mention on Wednesday, and I finally saw Representative Burris going to be all signed today. He had a great concert Saturday night. It's a bad gap after the football game. It was very glad to come over. Still a lot of time. They played very good for a while, and it was great. Oviedo Highr game, they all went, had a great time. It was an exciting game. It was a big football night, and it was a game to game. I was asked, and opened the Light Bar Tournament last week, oh, Sunday, John. They have, Oviedo hosted it again for the second year, and we didn't have a team in. We were chastised a little bit for it, so we got to make sure we could have, we're going to host, we got to have a team in. But we did win the last, the first year, so it was kind of giving the other guys a chance anyway. On a rainy Sunday morning, teams from, sorry, all over Tampa side of the road came over and all over. So it was a fun time, they had a good time. It's to showcase their skill, camaraderie, get to know other Light Bars and what people do, so it was a good time. There's a cherry bowling tournament, I'll talk about that this weekend. Julie's and Run is on Sunday this weekend also. And Farmers Market is coming up, others meeting, we're coming meeting afterwards, Farmers Market, of course, again. October day, sharp at three, make sure to make it.
That's it. Counselor Henry, you're up.
Yeah, I'll just piggyback one thing on the cherry bowling tournament next to the Oviedo Police Foundation. Chief, I think there's going to be even competition there, because I was there last night practicing a little bit, and as soon as I'm leaving, I walk out and in come three police officers. You know, and I ain't there to be a practice, so it's going to be a little competition. I would tell you, you won't make it go practice, but those police are really hard. They used to be easy, and now they're hard.
What's the practice called?
I will not disclose that.
I'm just like, you're practicing, because I'll practice about five minutes.
I hope so, but that should be a good, good event, so.
If it's a police fight, then you're going to be in beer, so.
Holy, come on.
You probably go up to the airport, order pizza. So we have a right to decide whether.
Friendly competition.
Okay.
Friendly competition. Anything else, Counselor?
No, sir.
Deputy Mayor, you're up.
Wednesday, I'll be here at the, for the tour. And then on Thursday, we have the ribbon cutting or wire breaking for the hospital at ten-thirty. Are there any special instructions for the council other than go where they're going to bless us?
Yes, I want to be, you know, see. I have the arrangements, department passes for us all. They were supposed to drop off today, but they didn't drop off, see you all today. Father? No.
Okay.
You have anything to add?
Uh, no. The only thing, all I have to say is bring your A game, because I bring a lot of A game.
You're bold.
You're saying?
You?
Yes. I got my own team.
You got a team of four players?
Yes.
Oh.
Well, that's it, it sucks.
Oh, did you really? You did not. Noah?
Noah, Noah's bowl the, bowl the full three-hundred game.
Sorry, exactly, I was going to say, now I'm really going to practice. I thought we got one of those two ninety games a few years ago.
I think Noah has to serve at church on Saturday. I'm busy. I'll have to get in there and fix.
We'll see, we'll see.
You're not going to hush it?
We'll see, what else does I have on my list?
Oh, and just how we're going to go to bowling, it was originally at two-fifteen, but the flyer was wrong, they announced one at sixteen, and so you have to check in, and then bowling at six-thirty.
Did you really get Noah's socks?
Thursday, the hospital opened, and I'll tell you, I just saw that emergency room and it was packed, and we were very lucky to have that bar, we were very lucky to have our guys, it was real well. This was not a serious situation, but it was scary enough for me to make the call, so tell the boys thanks, and that's all.
All right, that's all. Real quick, on my report, since it's all been covered, and we're, the concerts, Drew, I think everybody's seen, great job, you know, the first couple of times out. We got to see how we go, and I think it was a learning experience, and have to go forward with them, but they were both excellent. The ribbon cutting, obviously, we just touched on. We had the mayor's panel last Friday for leadership seminar, which was a lot of fun, second mayors get together, all of the events of leadership. Counselor Brick was up there, he gave a class. And our own Ms. Hayes was in the audience. Now, after the mayor's did.
I was going to say, what's going to review? That was wonderful, thank you.
Uh, we'll tell the chief afterwards, we got, we got the rest. Chief was there, happy to be here.
This actually was very entertaining.
It was entertaining. We were a very entertaining bunch to get the seven mayors together. The funny part about it, we say it every year, is all seven of us actually get along, and makes a great candidate, we all live in. How were the scores? Did we score high? Does anybody?
I had a note today, he mailed it to us. He was, he had a lot of very positive comments in the place.
Okay, that's always a big concern, that particular session, is where you're going to score a certain somebody from property appraisal club, because we're embarrassed when seven mayors get together. Anyway, it was awesome. All right, moving on, we have future meeting dates. Anything else? You're up.
Yeah, as a future discussion, I, Ron, I got to go to Brian about a couple of times tonight, that's a good question. We talked about the signage, that's what we're talking about. It's going slow, and I feel like we look at talking about possibly killing us out of there, especially since now that we have done some other things, kind of ensure that the government will be paying for the signs that we've drawn, et cetera. That way, we can change the code ourselves, get us out of that, and be allowed to get true signage and park signage and get stuff going earlier than waiting to get this master signage, we need to sign on both sides and work it out and everything going through it.
I know one person's going to agree with you.
So, you know, I just like to talk about killing us out, changing the signage code, and then we have the ability, whenever, again, we're going to, you know, tweak some things for us, we won't, that agreement's that agreement, we'll still, but at least discuss it and possibly get a little bit of clutches.
Counselor, have any objections? Could you spend time with the staff before the discussion?
A lot of chores and.
Oh, yes, we're outside, yes. We talked a couple of times, all get together. Yeah, just so we can have a tip one hand and just kind of see the direction we want to go. Anything else to put with the order?
Mayor, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Are you looking for a discussion item on a regular meeting or are you looking for a work session?
No, no, a regular. Okay. I'm following the procedure, I ask for permission to put it on this discussion item.
Then we'll have a work session on it, and I'm like, I wonder if we're doing land development code or something.
No.
I don't know, maybe. I got those land development orders.
All right, anything else? Go to the order. All right, the future meeting dates, we have Thursday, September twenty-fourth, six-thirty P M, Land Development Code Work Session. Now, Dr. Correa, you're very passionate about this, and we do appreciate that, but it's also a food truck Thursday. And we need to go support Drew Bowyer over the Oviedo on Park. What do you think about hours? Can we do that for about an hour?
Yeah, already have a meeting over there.
I heard your presentation was really great, I'll, I'll promise.
Get my hair off of something. Let's try to keep it to about an hour, or a few minutes, that way we can. We can all go over it. I wouldn't, I can provide a rate for it. Hey, Burton's already ready, he has no issues, so anybody else? We have to reason.
We're there, we're here.
Okay, we're good.
The meeting's canceled.
No, we're good. We'll be here, but let's just, we'll move along, we're at forty-five.